Time is now seven thirty and the meeting is called to order. An adequate notice of tonight's meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the following methods: Distribution of notice to the record, posting of agenda on the school district website, and parent square on the VOE's Facebook page, and on the various Leonia listservs. Please note that the board will be moving away from the announcements via the Facebook page and listservs after the last meeting of this year. All announcements regarding the board meeting will be provided via parent square, which is open to the entire community. I strongly encourage you to register for an account for timely receipt of information from the board. Stand for five.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of Riches stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Choi. Ms. Stein, I assume.
Present.
Ms. De Park. Ms. Rockham.
Here.
Ms. Zepka. Ms. Segal. Ms. Thompson.
Present.
Ms. Wild.
Present.
Vice President Mellon.
Present.
And President Lee. Also in attendance is our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Gaidens, as well as Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Caramanos, as well as Board Attorney, Mr. Lepere, as well as three student reps, Hannah Choi, Emily Gilbar, and Renee Kim. All present.
Okay, we are switching D and E, so we are moving on to public presentations.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening. Over the course of the school year, our students have the opportunity to take badge placement AP test exams. And Leonia High School has a very, very strong record of students who do well on those AP exams. Sometimes, students do so well, they do so well that we encourage them and their families to come out to Board of Education meeting to be recognized. There are three students in the audience today. They will remain students if I call them up. It's Kai Hammond, Isaac Young, and Kaishon Loken. Let's give a round of applause and I'll say why. So, they recently took the AP Computer Science Principles exam. So, all three of these students scored a five on the exam, which is very good on a scale of one to five, they scored a five. The average score, by the way, ran around a three for this examination. What's notable is the fact that of these three students, they scored a perfect score on the examination. And when I mean perfect, I mean perfect. Not a single question was wrong. Worldwide, only four hundred and fifty-nine students did this. In 2023, one hundred and sixteen thousand students took this test. And these three students here scored a perfect score. Congratulations to them. To the appreciation that the Leonia Board of Education congratulates them, is the Board of Education's hope that this success is the first of many accomplishments that will continue to bring pride to their families and to the school district. Therefore, be it resolved at the Board of Education on this fourteenth day of November, hereby congratulates our students on their achievement. Folks, please go forward to get your certificates. Congratulations. If I can report the Board of Education, you can join us for a photo. Also, please, board members, please come up, including our reps. We're taking a photo. Parents, oh, we got our cameras very, very nice. We're gonna step right back over here. Come on, Ms. Choi, probably take two. And if the board members could join and gather around the students, we will take a photo together. Come on, board members, come on in. It's the district's accomplishments. Let's go, student rep over here, Tim.
So proud.
Yes, yes.
So proud tonight.
One hundred and sixteen thousand students. Great job.
Congratulations.
And now they have studying to go home with you so they can take off. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you, my friends. There's a moment, let me just go a bit out of order there. I wanted these students to get home and finish their homework. Thank you. Because we all know that they certainly do it. So, thank you. They are. They are currently, they're in, they're seniors now? Seniors, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comments regarding agenda items. Just a reminder that public comments are limited to students. If anyone from the public would like to step forward, please state your name and address.
I'm Lori Molina, 104 Nelson Court. I'm also here representing the CPAG group, which is the Special Ed Parental Advisory Group. I know that personal items and keeping teachers and staff is a really hard thing to do. But it's really sad, once again, to see under section RA, the resignation of Emily Knapp, who's the ACS School Psychologist. The child study team at ACS has changed over maybe fifteen times. And I just hope that, as well as we're keeping the teachers, that we're doing the same thing with the child study team. Especially with our young kids, this is when they need that. So hopefully, we can develop something or put something into protocol so that this team actually stays on. I don't know what you can do. It's like Den laying a, you know, a magic wand in front of people to make them stay. But child study team and school psychologists is really important, especially at ACS. So I really hope that you can find somebody who fits the position and somebody that will stay going forward. And congratulations to the three eleventh graders. That's absolutely amazing, a perfect score. Thanks.
One twenty-five relatives. One of the questions I was gonna ask is how the superintendent is doing and how he feels he's doing in the job and the challenges associated. But after tonight's presentation, you must be feeling pretty good.
I take, I take all the credit for work done before I arrived here.
That's pretty, pretty exceptional. Is that a New Jersey exclusive? Is that in New Jersey?
I, I don't know the, I'll, I'll address that when you're done.
Yeah, it might be, that would be very, you know, very exclusive group. They were the only people in New Jersey, the kids that did it. I have a couple of questions. On monthly transfer report, facilities acquisition and construction services. What are we acquiring? Or is that just a name that's drawing me in the wrong direction? Since facilities acquisitions, I presume by that title, it's like we're trying, we're getting some facility somewhere. I don't know. So I'd like an explanation of that. I also have a question about programs. The amendments to the Shared Services Agreement looks like a good deal. Now, I don't know much about that. Looks like county's paying us almost ninety thousand dollars. Is that, is that correct? Do we make money on that? Are there more programs like that where we can collect more money? That was the amended, amended amendments to the Shared Services Agreement, Bergen County Special Services Board of Education in Leonia. So I may have misread that, but it looks like we're, we're collecting some money from them. Finally, after you go through the bills, like I, I go through a lot of the stuff, you know, one, we one day, come on, that come on, you kind of get a feel for where a lot of the money's going, a lot of money. And I'm, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna stay upfront. This, I have absolutely no problem with services being provided. I had commented on, I've been Leonia Library, had a financial problem about ten, fifteen years ago. I recommended alternatives. And all of a sudden, I was branded as being anti-Leonia, which is carried forward to this day, and that's not true. So the question is, looking at this, first of all, the monthly transfer report, you're looking at the regular programs, running around twelve million dollars. And right below, we have the special education, basic skills, remedial, about six million, about half of that. So it looks like about a third of that budget, that combined budget, is, is for special services we provide. And if you go through a lot of the bills, you find that we're paying forty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, up to, I think, ninety thousand dollars to send eight kids who have special needs to a, a facility that can, can train them and take care of them and teach them, which is fine. The, the issue I have is that, that we have to pay for it, I think, and I, and I'm not saying we shouldn't pay for it. What I think we should say is basically a statement is we should be obligated to pay the equivalent cost of, of providing tuition and education for the average student here. And the state, the county, and the federal government should pick up the difference. What I'm saying is, and I'm not sure how we approach that. But it's a pretty significant chunk of our budget. It comes up time, month after month after month. There's a lot of money. And when you blend that all in, you look at the cost of providing education to everybody, it's distorted by that amount of money. So I think service is great. It needs to be done. I just don't think we need somehow figure a different way of skinning a cat. And that is just a statement that, that I wanted to say, because it just comes up over and over and over. And this is a huge portion of our tax bill, the education, and that's a huge portion of what we get. I'm not against providing service. We should continue to do it. Thank you.
So, Yihan, we'll move on to Board of Ed or Student Representative Comments. Members of the Board of Ed wishing to... First.
I can, I'm gonna respond to comments that were made. So, so thanks, Ms. Molina, for your comment regarding the ACS staff. I'll, I just wanna, to your point, the idea of holding on to staff, because I mean, everyone has staff gun, right? And I wanna, wanna mirror that with you. I just wanna point out that on the agenda tonight, under letter N, new business, this cop's replacement is already on the agenda to be on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. In, in many ways, Leonia is a very advantageous place to work if people want to come here. And they wanna come work with us. So that person was interviewed today, and it's on the agenda for this evening. So that's, there'll be, there'll be no interruption in service. I just want to point that out, to your point. To Arthur, to your question there. You know, I don't know the New Jersey-based data of how many students took the test. That's actually a good question. I'm gonna poke a little bit at that, see if I can, I think that's Ms. Stein sort of asked the College Board. Not that I'm curious now, but are three students doing so well? Were that followed, relation to everybody else?
Terrible.
So impressive. Well, yeah, perfect score. And in your, your comment regarding the special education costs, I, and I completely recognize the idea that you're not talking about services, the idea of cost. There's been discussion for a very, very long time about how the expense that comes with special education should be supported at the state and possibly the federal level. That local school districts, that budgets are swung in either direction, back and forth, predicated upon that the needs of the special education students and those costs, as you can tell by looking at our bills and our agenda, are just breathtaking, breathtaking. In many ways, we're, we're, we're clients of the market, right? The market drives that. So your point is very well taken, and that's been, in my, my, when I was the president of the County Association, we talked a lot about that. We advocated, trended about that. They, they now, they had, they agree with us, but then they don't fund us.
So what does, what can the voters do to put the pressure on?
Well, voters should agitate directly to, you know, taxpayers and residents should advocate directly to their legislators, because that's legislative. The idea that there should be a minimum threshold, that when you pass the threshold, the difference is made at the state and federal level.
If I could speak to that for one moment. I've had the opportunity to be on some county and state level committees and interact with some legislators. And what I tend to hear over and over again is that they're unaware of a lot that goes on with, with running a school, what expenses are. So it's worth reaching out to your legislators, especially the local ones, and just educate them. Because I tell you time and time again, I hear, oh, I didn't know that. And you can also, I know Ms. Voss is hugely supportive of education, so that's another good person to reach out to. Thank you.
There is a...
Something chip in, chip in after our certain...
There is a little bit. So we can state aid for each student, right? Whatever that well, treat, amount they pay. But there's an application for extraordinary aid that you do at the end of the year that you can get. However, if the student is placed in another public school setting, or, or a public special school, or whatever it is, you can get a portion of the amounts that you pay over forty-five thousand. For a private school, you can get a portion of the amounts that you pay over fifty-five thousand. So the state does a calculation every year. People make all these submissions. Sometimes you get seventy percent, sometimes you get eighty percent. But again, it's the amounts over that. So if you have a kid who's going to a placement and it costs sixty thousand, that's a private school, you're gonna get a portion of that five thousand piece. So there's something, but it's not a hundred percent by any means. So it's, but your point's well taken in Leonia, like every other school district, the state struggles with it.
So you go through the bills, like that, they come up, you go through it, it just smacks you in the face.
Thank you.
And relating to your question, relating to the, on the monthly transfer report, the facilities, that's basically relating to the projects that we budgeted. So that amount that you see, I believe it's, uh, might be like twenty-something thousand on that monthly transfer report. You're indicating the, the year-to-date net transfers?
Yeah, it's showing a budget of one point five million and then...
Yeah, so the budget is, is relating to everything that we kind of, when I presented the budget, all the projects that we were looking to provide through ROD grant, as well as, you know, debt service assessment, anything that gets charged to the Fund Twelve lines.
Yeah, the year-to-date transfers are twenty-seven thousand.
Correct. That was actually appropriation to close out the Board of Ed building project and also the LMS project. That was approved previous meeting.
The title was misleading, so...
Yeah, and that, that's actually, that, that title actually comes from the state, but it entails everything in, related to capital projects, more or less, you know, sort of category set.
Moving on to item F, Board of Ed Member or Student Representative Comments. Okay. Moving on to item G, approval of consent agenda items.
Just, just before the motion, there just needed to be two, one clarification and one change relating to, under Finance, letter F, relating to that revised amendment, shared service agreement. There was a, an error in that agreement that was identified later. So the agreement needs to be pulled, and then Bergen County Special Services is revising it. And we'll, we'll approve it at a later meeting.
Okay, so consent minus finance F?
Correct.
Okay.
And then for clarification, under Finance H, in that column, the revised maximum legal service budget, it's a little bit not as clear. It's, that column should be sixty-five thousand, so that's gonna be changed from fifty, it's sixty-five thousand. The increase is fifteen thousand, just to clarify.
So it's going from fifty to sixty-five?
Correct.
We don't need to call H, do we?
No.
Okay. So, approval of consent agenda items, and I will... Maria, in a second.
Sir.
Are there any items anyone would wish to call for discussion? Yihan, hold on, please.
Ms. Choi.
Yes.
Ms. Stein, I assume.
Yes.
Ms. De Park.
Yes.
Ms. Rockham.
Yes.
Ms. Segal. Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Wild.
Yes.
And the Vice President Mellon.
Yes.
Motion carries on consent agenda.
Moving on to letter I, Administrative Reports. First we'll have Dr. Gaidens, our Superintendent.
I have a general rule that I follow. I limit myself to ten items. Ten, that's my, that's the rule I make. I'm gonna go to eleven tonight, but there's a bit of an asterisk in there. So the, the eleventh is actually related to CUSAC. So we have a, CUSAC is a triennial every three years, or less. The county, or County Department of Education visits the school district, spends an entire day here, and goes through, top to bottom, the whole organization. As part of that CUSAC evaluation, we have to show that we've done certain things over time, and I just wanna, if you'll notice on the agenda, it says CUSAC Compliance Indicator Student Safety Data Report. This was presented back in the, in the, in the spring, rented by, by Dr. Caramanos back in the spring, but I wanted to do it now, because I want it put on the agenda. So when they come to visit us in January, they, we have this on, up on a recent agenda. This is nothing that has not been heard before by, by the public, it's really repeating it here. And I just wanna emphasize that over the course of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, when it came to the incidents involving student safety, whether it be violent vandalism, substance abuse, or even weapons, which were zero, by the way. When there were seventeen incidents at the high school over the course of the entire school year. For context, that's a hundred and eighty school days, eight hundred students per day coming to the building, seventeen total for the year, thirteen for the middle school, and ACS led the way with absolutely zero incidents. So I want to thank our pre-k to our fourth graders, that they're excellent behavior when it comes to that. The total of thirty incidents that we're seeing there. So I just wanna say that, and that's not new data. But it's more or less in the minutes, and we could show that through the CUSAC system. Other great things we have going on around the district. Today, we hosted three hundred and fifty parents here at ACS for American Educational Week. I was here with Mr. Breyer, Dr. Martinez were helping out. Fantastic visit. It's a day that was established. I don't know how old, I reckon, Ed Week, Ed Week is. It was established during a time when public schools were under assault and they were being picked on. And it was a day designed by the NEA to bring family members into the district to see the work that we're doing in school. So Ed Week, very successful tonight. Last week, Dr. Karen Doris and I had the chance to visit LMS, and we were the, we were the sole judges for the door decorating contest for the Spirit Week. We, we told the winners, we, we announced the winners of the three grade levels, of the four grade levels, and then we burnt all those records, because we're never gonna show who scored what. We literally, like, treaded it when they were done. But fantastic job by the middle school, really, really great spirit, good enthusiasm there. LHS had their homecoming dance. They had the homecoming dance, and it was the largest dance that they've had in recent memory. Over four hundred students came out. Four hundred students came out, and a wonderful evening, wonderful, a lot of fun. I think that's a very positive indicator for a school district when students on a Friday night will voluntarily go back to school. So we're very proud of them, and thank you for that. And I hope that our student reps may make a comment about that event when they give their talk. We mentioned the AP perfect scores tonight. Congratulations to our three students here. I want to share that the, the long-delayed lockers at LHS are finally arriving. So those gaping holes of concrete on the first floor of the school are being filled. It was a holiday moment for us, because I've been calling the person every single day for the past few weeks to get those installed. Coming up tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, the community will receive a notice about the upcoming Holiday Market, which will be held in December at LHS. That is a student council fundraiser, student council fundraiser. We sent out our first flyer going out tomorrow morning, and it will be sent out a week prior to. Bergen County Choir, fantastic success there. Of the forty schools in Bergen County that are student-selected, Leonia had twenty-three students picked. It was the most students ever from Leonia was picked to be part of the County Choir. Congratulations, Mr. Dunn. This week, we also held a joint HSA meeting. Dr. Caramos and I met with the parent leaders from all three schools. Thank you for their time. That. Yesterday was World Kindness Day, organized by Ms. Emily Lamb. Students had the chance to send in anonymous messages of, of care and concern for each other. Very, very nice. At my last, in my eleventh, kind of tenth item, I want to, I want to thank you, congratulate Ms. Mellon and Mr. Lee for, for being, reappointed to the Board of Education. And I know that Dr. Miestre is in the audience tonight. He'll be joining us in December. Dr. Miestre, congratulations on your election Board of Education. And Ms. Stein, I assume, thank you for your time serving on the board as you rotate out. That's my entire report. Thank you, Ms. Mellon.
We'll move on to, with special services, but small business administration report.
Thank you, Vice President Mellon. I do have a few items. The first item is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which, you know, I would like to let everyone know, it is underway. We did open it up, all the worksheets to the various departments, and we plan on having various department meetings, as well as finance committee meetings, following over the next few months. The next item is the application for state aid, which Mr. Lepere commented on relating to some of the state aid relating to special services. So that is underway, that has started. And what we do is it's a snapshot today, October thirteenth date of this year for, you know, next, next budget, determining how much state aid that the district's gonna get. So the business office has completed its verification of the data for inputting onto the state website. There were meetings that were completed with Ms. Russo and her assistant, Ms. Bach, as well as Ms. Skander. So I would like to thank all of them for their assistance in making sure the data that is being reported is accurate and, you know, validating and confirming that, you know, the district is getting the, the required amount relating to, you know, special services, as well as LEP students. The application is due to the state early December. The next, the next item, just a backup relating to the ASSA, just as far as a snapshot, the overall number is pretty, pretty consistent. However, the enroll number did drop about fifty students as a result of Ed Wood residents slightly decreasing from the prior year, roughly about thirty students, as well as there was a slightly decreased number of parent paid, paid pre-k students that we, you know, received from Leonia residents, as well as non-residents. So that, that caused for the decrease as far as the other categories. Students that we're sending out of the district relating to special services, special ed services, that's pretty consistent, as well as low-income numbers are pretty consistent, as well as LEP numbers. So all the other categories are pretty consistent. So hopefully, you know, the state aid, you know, won't fluctuate as far as the decrease. The next area is technology, relating to the overall technology of the district. So Mr. Samuel, just something to keep, you know, down the road, Mr. Samuel is in the process of completing a technology plan. And he will present it to the full board at the January twenty-third meeting, so that is in the pipeline to kind of, you know, go over a little bit more detail as far as, you know, the, the total snapshot of the district, as far as the plan for the future. The last item relates to the capital projects update, just to kind of, you know, give everyone an update where we stand, you know, and how we're moving going forward relating to the various projects. So there's two projects relating to insurance. One is the gym doors at LHS, as well as the LHS electrical. Both those projects are underway with the architect as far as finalizing the drawings. He's planning on hopefully going out to bid late December, so he should be able to provide the necessary documents that the district can advertise to go out to bid in late December. And hopefully, the project will, you know, get underway early January, depending on how it, you know, impites the, the school. So we'll look at that. The next project relates to the theme of mitigation projects relating to LHS and LMS. Those are also in the process of getting completed by the architect. He's just waiting to receive the engineer drawings. At that point, he's planning on hopefully getting everything he needed, and then we're gonna be setting up a meeting with, with him, myself, Dr. Gaidens, as well as Mr. Woods, to go over the scope of work as far as what, you know, what'll be done, the, the final budget numbers, and putting together the information needed to go out to bid. Those projects are, are gonna be a summer project because of what it entails, how it, you know... Those projects are are going to be a summer project because of what it entails, how it, you know, it it will, you know, hinder the the instructional, you know, the the operation of the schools. So those will be there in the summer, but we will look to go out to bid end of January for both those projects. The last piece is the twenty-three, twenty-four projects that we, that myself have put together in the, in the the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The first project is the rod, rod project relating to the ACS roof that was approved. The district has received the preliminary eligible letter, but we're still waiting to receive the final eligible letter. Once we receive that, then we could go out to bid. But at this point, the architect will start the design process to put that together. From the previous meeting, Arthur, you had asked about, I guess, the nature of the replacement. Is it going to be replaced, the roof? Is it going to be an added layer? So from speaking to the architect, the intention is, is that scope of work will be a replacement of the of the complete roof. It's going to be ripping off the old one and putting the the new roof down just because of the nature of it. But he's still in the process of finalizing, you know, the drawings and and all that. The last piece is the projects that didn't get approved by Rod Grant. So from speaking to the architect and verification by myself as far as funding, so we were able to identify the projects that we are able to fully fund a hundred percent now that, you know, the Rod Grant isn't, isn't coming up with the difference, the forty percent. So based on that analysis, the architect will start putting together a proposal to move those projects along. The key thing is with the mitigation projects, we're, we're going to wait to determine the overall budget on the mitigation projects to kind of see how it impacts the capital reserve. You know, if we have to come up with additional funding not covered by FEMA. So those, you know, will be moved along, but, you know, they're they're kind of on a, on a slight course, and that's it.
I realize I might be very important, I never mentioned when the holiday marketing was. It's actually on Saturday, December ninth, from twelve to four P M. at the High School presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item J, committee reports, student representatives.
Well, exciting upcoming events at Leona High School specifically. So tomorrow, we have a food insecurity night that is run by the Conversation Good Humanities, Ro Kappa, J. Save Service Club, and the National Art Society. And we have a speaker and food drive that will be taking place there. So that will begin at six P M. in our LHS Little Theater, so that, we're looking very forward to that. And then we have a Ballroom Against Gun Violence Tournament on the sixteenth from six to eight P M. That is with the Moms Demand Action, obviously to support the victims of gun violence, which is very important to all the students and faculty at LHS. And then we also, currently, we have a Chipotle fundraiser going on at the Edge Water One in City Place, I believe. And then today, we have the Deca Hunger Games event. I was not in school today, I don't know if you guys were, but we did have that going on. Okay, then we also have a career readiness event, which will be next week. So that, I believe that we had that last year, well, it's a little career fair for people to attend. We can just see like things that we're interested in for other students out of Leonia. And then for a new club that we have, it's Ski and Salsa Club, which sounds really cool and exciting, so.
Just an update on the Spirit Week that we had, and I know Dr. Gaden's kind of touched on our homecoming. It was very successful, and being on student council, we saw a big jump from last year, the amount of people who participated even in homecoming. So I think school spirit now has been a big upgrade. And I don't know, if you guys go on the Leonia StuCo twenty-five page on Instagram, you guys will see a lot of cute pictures of, I think, oh, Dan's not here, but the yee-haw golf. If you wanted to see really bad, you guys will see that over there. Yeah, she's just giving you a slideshow, but overall, it was very successful.
I also want to promote Beat Night, which will be this Friday at seventeen. I love Beat Night, I go, I'm going every single year, and I'm actually, I'm seeing the entire event. It's really fun, we have over ten acts, I think we have like twelve or fourteen, performing songs, jokes. We have like really cool bands coming. It's just a really fun event, I encourage everyone to attend.
Great, thanks. Education, Maria? We met in early November with the committee. We talked about a few different things. We, we got a preview of the plans for the spring break trip or Spring of Twenty-Five, which sounds pretty exciting. We reviewed the changes to the physics curriculum. We spoke about enrichment opportunities in class for ACS students. And then we also reviewed the various tech projects that are going in within the school and what the district is doing to identify what the priorities are, because there are quite a few projects. So our state will be meeting again in December. Thank you. Finance and H A. We were.
Yeah. So in in place of President Lee, I could comment. So we met last night, actually. Some of the items I kind of discussed in my business report, but I'll just go over a little bit. So we discussed the technology plan, you know, what that someone looked like from Mr. Samuel, with the date, second meeting in January. The next item we touched on was the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We discussed help benefit rates for January first twenty-four with the, you know, how it will directly impact Leonia with, you know, the new increases. But what we talked about is how it, you know, kind of blends out based on Leonia's data, where, you know, where the current staff falls, as well as, you know, the open enrollment. So we're, you know, we're looking at that closely to see, you know, some of the benefits going forward relating to potential impact for future rate increases and what, you know, other options, you know, the district could potentially take advantage of. The next area was capital projects. We went through, which I kind of went briefly over the various projects, the status, the updates from the architect. And the last piece was, we touched on insurance coverage update pertaining pertaining to the claims that we have outstanding relating to the sexual abuse. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Next is community relations and communications. Oh, we have it. And we have Charles, Steve.
Yes, sure. We met at the end of the October, and we had all different policies and regulations. We reviewed them, the most of them, actually, we reviewed the work, the most of them, most of them is okay. But there's like a couple of items, we might want to table it for the next meeting, next board meeting, so that we want to discuss, because I mean, because of the, whatever, some of the stuff is quite impact in our deposit. I mean, professors, based on the some of the mandated regulations. So we'd like to discuss about the table in the board meeting, so we can more discuss it thoroughly. And then, I mean, pretty much, I mean, the, most of the, most of the, you know, things are, they're combined, they just make one and type thing, it's okay, but yeah, I mean, the details, we'll be honest, it's, it's all, thank you.
And I'll go over safety and security, not much. We did not meet November first, we are meeting again November twenty-ninth. Our committee reports, correct me if I'm wrong, we are moving on to. I have a motion. Isaac, second? Sid? Are there any items anyone would wish to call for discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Ms. De Jesus?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Ms. Rockham?
Yes.
Ms. De Sago? Ms. Thompson? Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
Vice President Melman?
Yes.
Motion carries on new business.
Next up is public comment. If anyone in the public would like, wish to speak on non-agenda items pertaining to the Leonia Public School District, please state your name and your address. Arthur?
Project, Project J one twenty-five, there's a chair for Isaac. There was an item regarding a policy on hit that was an open issue that you were going to work on at committee. And I'm just trying to find out what the status of that changes, I can run this, I will follow up, and I'm following up.
Yeah, it's just the review, so we, we'll stay reviewing it.
I didn't see, I didn't see, usually when you revise it, it's in there.
Right, yeah, but like, the, after was that, because of the, our, the board president, he was involved in the table, so it's rep, it is, it was.
Thank you, one other comment for Eric. One of the things that I brought up, and Dan's not here, but he's the chair of the capital strategic plan and capital planning, is that the long range, the real long range, I know it's limited to five years, but you've really got to think beyond that. Strategic plan for the district was being, it was essentially only up until Brian was was hired and on board and had a chance to sit. You may not have a chance to go through, probably thought about it yet, but in the budget process, you may want to budget some money for possibility at some point during the year that you want to start doing this, which you need. You might need a consultant, you might need to do, spend some money exploring the feasibility of what the district wants to do, where they want to go. And I'm not talking about, you know, changing doors and planning stuff, I'm talking about where you're going to take this. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur, regarding the strategic planning. So the the rough timeframe and timeframe, we've, I'll share it again, we've talked about it before, was to really spend this year, having a beat this year. And then the twenty-four, twenty-five school year really was focused on the the full-blown community involvement with the five-year strategic plan. One thing that the, I would recommend that the board does, that they put an art paid question proposals for outside consultants, the purpose of assisting with the writing of that. We had a, a previous district had great success with using New Jersey school boards, they did two full five-year plans for us. Matt Lee runs after them, did a very, very nice job. But I do think for the purpose of being thorough, that the board should definitely, you know, put something out there and see who wants to do that. Outdoor, outside consultants would be used, and we have discussed from a budgetary perspective, having that built into the next year's budget. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item P, word comment. Word numbers, which is. Why, I? Yes. We are moving to close session, correct? Yeah, okay. We are moving to close session at eight.
We just need a motion.
Rockham?
Mark?
Second, Maria? Awesome, so. We are on our approval of personnel items. Can I have a motion? I'm just, Maria?
Second.
Isaac? Any items, anyone who wish to call for discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Ms. De Jesus?
Yes.
Mr. Far?
Yes.
Ms. Rockham?
Yes.
Ms. De Sago?
Yeah.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
And Vice President Melman?
Yes.
Motion carries on personnel items.
Guys, we are adjourned?
Yes.
They said just a motion and a second.
I'm starting this car.
Five, six, seven, we're up the seat, second, Maria?
Yeah, I'm setting for call.
All right.
This is all.
Thank you.
Right.
When you see a record.